Sorry about that, sorry I'm a minute or late or so. I really had to pee. Okay. Want to welcome all my friends and all of my subscribers back to my channel. If you like what you see, of course, leave a comment. If you don't like what you see, leave a comment. If you don't like what you see, I don't know what to tell you. Don't like it. But if you like what you see, of course, like I said, leave a comment. I am coming to you live from Brownstown again. Been coming to their meetings lately because I'm really interested in following along with this quality of life ordinance they're passing. So, uh, yeah, I'm just kind of following along. I don't live in Brownstown, so I'm just kind of checking this out to see how this is gonna go. And so far, to be honest with you, I don't like it. They've tabled it. Maybe they'll table it again. I don't know, we'll see. I guess, um, I guess we're gonna find out. It's finally, it's finally fall, finally got chilly here in Pennsylvania. I'm a little bit cold right now, actually, if I'm not gonna tell the truth. So, I'm gonna have to put up with him for another four or five minutes here rambling on and on, um. So, uh, running for Southmont Borough Council, as everyone knows, um, it's going real good. Put out a bunch of, uh, signs throughout Southmont, lost a bunch of signs throughout Southmont. I was gonna say this, man, if you're taking time out of your day, take down my little signs with my name on them, asking you to vote for me. Or you might want to find a hobby or something, I don't know, I mean, really? Okay. You know, if that, if that, if that, if that trips your trigger, cool. Good for you. Those weren't cheap. You can bring them back to me if you want, I mean, I'll put them somewhere else. Um, trying to think of what else. Updates on some cases I've been working on, um, can easily, uh, just, uh, search, uh, uh, Clanchard versus Upper Hutter Township, you can search those, there's an opinion by Judge Stephanie Haynes. Came out recently, it's freezing, oh, I don't like this. This first couple, these first couple times it gets chilly. Because I shiver now, when I was real fat, didn't really bother me. But now, man, oh boy. It gets right in there real quick, um. So I'm shaking now. I'll get over it once I get inside. Uh, any other updates? So I went and saw Goose over the weekend in Philly. It was a good time, uh, went to Gino's and had a cheesesteak, it was good. Um, you know, people around here just absolutely, just absolutely say all this, all these mean nasty things about people from Philadelphia, and you know what? I didn't have any issues with anybody I saw down there, in fact, I saw on a Saturday night at around midnight, a thriving bustling little, little, little hotspot in, in a little neighborhood, um, I don't know. And had a good cheesesteak. So, it was fun. It's hard to drive back from, from Phil-, from a concert in Philadelphia back to here, it's far. I don't think I'm gonna do that again, I think I'm gonna get a place to stay from here on out, that was, that was kind of far, um. So, things have been going good, uh, you know, I have some things going on with some other lawsuits that I filed. Election Day is coming up on November 4th this year, coming up soon. Um, been doing a lot of, uh, you know, videos here in shorts and stuff to, uh, you know, let you know what, what I have to say about the election, and why I'm running, and my platform, and what I intend to change, so, uh, something I've been doing lately and something that I get thanked for more often than not about most things is coming to these meetings and live streaming, so hey, why don't you guys come inside with me? Inside? And maybe we can piss off somebody from Brownstown. We'll see. I mean, I know, and I don't really want to, I do, I don't know if I want to speak tonight or not, and maybe I will. Okay, let's go in. I thought this place was packed. Let's see. Not so much. Take this front row seat right here. This is the one I want. That's really cool, they put a Commonwealth in Pennsylvania, CEO. Right there on there. Right there on their agenda. Looks good. Wonder if Brownstown Borough, I see it could look good there too.
They'll just come up with lists of things to do.
That's true, I hate the outside of our house right now, we're just weeds everywhere. I need some sort of equipment, nothing, I don't know where else to store it, but I need it.
It's tougher than this. The skid loader has a little button. So like you can press the button and then it's like kind of flip, so it doesn't dig in, but you gotta make sure you dig that for us. You can make a
I'm sure. I'm just like the homeowner version of that equipment too, it'll dig in, it won't do what like real equipment will do. I don't know, there's no good answers.
The United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone to the meeting of Brownstown Borough Council.
Rick Ramish? John Baylog? Brian Cora? Bruce Shannon? Chrissy Dicker? Michael Guyer? Absent, Jessica Young? Here.
Okay, so the first thing we're gonna do is we're gonna do a quick opening of the bids that came in for the park. We'll run through, I would, well, awards and that, we will just open them and give an update. This is Graus General Services. Looks like they're local.
Who's that?
Rose.
Rose.
R O S E? Sixty-two thousand, one hundred dollars. Milky Zonin Garden is next. Sixty, sixty thousand, seven hundred and three dollars. Porter Enterprises from Huntington, D A.
Seal.
So you know it's sealed?
Sixty-four thousand, forty-two dollars and thirty-seven cents. Next, Opie Construction.
Opie?
Some little base bid. This is, they added an add-on for a cap, so base bid is fifty-two thousand, three hundred and fifty.
What was the?
The add-on for a cap on top of the wall was three thousand dollars.
Fifty-five, three fifty.
Three fifty, is that right?
Two thousand, three hundred and fifty. Okay, next is Straw Construction. I'm not sure where, I know they're working on the, uh, the park. Okay, eighty-three thousand, three hundred and sixty-five dollars.
Three, six, five.
Eighty-three, three, six, five.
Forests? Did you spell?
Forests Construction. Looks like. I see sixty-seven thousand, six hundred dollars.
Sixty?
Sixty-seven, six hundred, sixty-seven thousand, six hundred dollars. Okay. A little higher than I expected. Okay, we'll move on from there.
For a month of September, uh, Police Department had three hundred and forty-one reports of service for yearly total so far of three thousand, two hundred and fifty-five. Eleven of those last month were in Brownstown, yearly total of a hundred and fifty-two. Nothing really important tried. Few reportable crimes, uh, Veeve entered into, I don't recall if anything was stolen out of that. A report of loitering and prowling on someone's property, someone's walking around out of someone's garage, nothing was stolen, anything, they're just walking around their garage. And a dog confinement complaint with that person or sighted for their dog running loose. That's really all I have for Brownstown.
Okay, um, I know you did have a hearing of
They had, yeah.
How, how did that?
That's all, it's all continued, um, they're giving her a chance to show building designs, redesign, all that, um, the van, she's supposed to have that removed or have the owner have it inspected, whether that's done yet or not. I'm just ready to get a third more date.
Okay, anybody got any questions for the chief? Thanks, chief. Move on to, uh, okay. Everybody got a chance to review the meetings, the minutes from the September meeting, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the So, okay. Anybody have a comment?
Do you want to speak to public comment?
Anybody have a board?
I do want to speak, but I'll let anybody in the residence speak first, okay?
I know what you guys want to talk about, you guys have one picked out?
Kind of. I was, I took screenshots and was gonna show you. I don't need to, do you?
Uh, no.
Okay. Could I come up and present yourself?
Yeah. Which I'm not happy with that.
So, I see these three on Amazon.
Is this in turn red ever?
I think it does, and you could have it set like for twenty-five or whatever, and it'll be on. And then when the person comes down, it'll change to red, like you're going thirty-five, does that?
I understand what you're saying, so you said, you said for the speed limit, you want it to be in the speeded terms red?
Correct.
Those are really cheap.
I know, and then I thought, what, would something like that work somewhere? Well, how much those are?
How much are they?
Two hundred and eighty-five dollars.
And this is how much we have to play with. So,
Just order one to try?
Uh, we want to put it on going both directions, I think, you know, up and down.
The same way before, I mean, we opened it up. You know, most of the ones I see have a little blue dot when they're going over the speed limit.
I think somehow that dot hits you as you're coming, and then it'll shoot what your speed is.
Geez. How much do they cost?
Usually, yeah, that blue dot means that it is breaking something, and then they set a warning. And then some of them will set a flash of white light when you hit a certain speed.
I saw yours up in Westmont.
Yeah, and then those ones, once you're going ten miles an hour above, which is what we have to allow, it flashes red and blue, to let them know that they're violating.
That's the same, that's sort of the same one I have.
One on Buckmouth. Oh, yeah.
I saw that up, I liked that, I caught it, it was flashing, I want it to be at five mile an hour, like, oh, that's pretty cool.
Yeah, it basically let you know that five, technically you're speeding, but, you know, and then once you hit that pad, it flashes red, a little red and blue light. Please stop taking your signs out there. I believe that's the same sign that Southmont's, to take comments.
Does it really flash red and blue?
They wouldn't have to be permanent.
BJ, does it really flash red and blue, the one in Southmont?
I don't know about theirs, because I'm not involved with theirs, that's not one they're set up for anymore. But you can have it set at a certain speed, it'll flash a little, little red and blue light.
I've never, I've never
Theirs might not be set to do that.
I've done it fast.
I'm not involved with the setup of theirs, I don't even have access to the data.
Right, anything, I, I know anything, anything over twenty-five, it doesn't show the speed, that's all I, that's all I know.
And ours doesn't do that?
No, like, it's the lights, it's almost exactly like the one in Riverside, honestly. You know what I mean, like, if you're coming down the hill, you know what I mean, like, and you're going like, say, thirty-one, okay? It'll show a blue dot, and then when you hit, when you hit the binders to get it under, then it starts showing your speed.
Oh, okay, yes, you can pick a speed where it doesn't show as a people watch for a high score.
Right, yeah, of course, yeah. Are they? Pen dot regulator?
No, because they're not, they're more or less an offender type of thing, they're not
They're not a state, they're not a state roads.
Yeah, the state roads, you have to, yeah, that's a whole different
I like to know these things, just for my own curiosity, you know what I mean, I, I have a, I have a quizzical brain, not that it matters, but you know.
And they only record that, like, sundance or anything.
The number, right, doesn't
They just tell you the time and how fast.
Okay, okay, so we got, we have a motion for later on in the meeting, we'll cover that, okay? So John, what do you got for us?
Um, okay, I noticed you guys have a, um, first thing, I, I just wanted to say, um, thanks for, you know, allowing your public to come and speak, and I get some pretty good viewership out of your, out of your, uh, meetings, um. I see you guys have a motion to approve a joiner of the Upper Hutter Township and West Hills Regional Police Commission, you might want to have your solicitor look over some of the impending lawsuits with some of those departments to make sure that you guys, your insurance is not, um, listen, I don't have, I don't have any problem with Brownstown or any, or any, or anything with you officials. You know, you, nobody over here has violated my rights, yet. Okay, but I don't come over here very often, um, you know, in, in this capacity, I'm not, I'm not talking about the Police Commission, but in this capacity, nobody's violated my rights, but um, I just wanted to let you guys know that those are happening, so you might want to make sure that, you know, you know, you guys, you know, it's all, it's all, that's all done by insurance company, so, you know, don't, there's no need to involve that with you guys, um. And I'm, I keep coming, because I'm curious about this quality of life ordinance you guys are passing, or attempting to pass, or the wording of it, and, um, you know, um, I, I'm just curious about, about, about it, you know, it, to me, to me, I think it's a little bit, um, frankly, a little bit unconstitutional, and I think it's a little bit of, um, I think it's way too subjective. And I think you're putting too much power in the hands of one person by, 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 uh, appointing a quality of life officer. Because if that quality of life officer doesn't like somebody, they can make that person's quality of, quality of life pretty, pretty, pretty miserable, you know, and and I can speak from absolute experience in, in my, in my dealings with, with both Southmont's zoning officer and, um, and Laurel Municipal, okay, that, that if, 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 if you so much as speak out against them, or if you so much as criticize them, okay? They put, they, they put, they put the hammer down, and frankly, a motion, you know, for, for a quality of life officer, you know, that's putting a lot of power in somebody's hands. That if it goes unchecked, I mean, you guys can do, you know, the quality of life officer can start hammering somebody for tickets, and then what? You know, and, and, and if it's, if you're gonna handle like parking tickets in the city, then it's, then it becomes a, it becomes a circle of, of, you tell somebody to go somewhere to get relief, and, and then you know what ends up happening? Hopefully, if you guys, if you guys abuse that power, hopefully, it winds up in, in court, but that's all I had to say today, um, so, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, John.
Yep.
Anybody else have a comment? Okay, thank you, we're gonna move on then, uh, to the approval of the September minutes. Okay, we have a motion for the approval of the September minutes, second by John, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Jess Treasor's report, please.
I passed out balances and the budget actual, um, and the general fund ledger. Just want to point out that on page two, in the middle, um, it shows the fire relief payment going to West Hills. Um, I paid them that along with their third quarter, um, and we paid West Hills Police, um, their third quarter as well. Um, talk to you guys about, uh, the Eads group. Um, our bills started coming in twenty-five dollars more, so I asked them why, they said that their inspectors were staying, uh, more than an hour, which I can confirm that's not true. Um, so I talked to Mark Moore, and he said that we can have our next two inspections for free, because he can't confirm that either, and he doesn't know why. Um, so that bill was paid for a hundred and twenty-five dollars, um, but our next two are free. I had put out a level accounting, um, that's from the beginning of when the funds were handed over to the boroughs, um, until now, you guys can look that over, that was asked for last month. We have, um, collected a lot in fire service fees, um, but I still have some people that owe, so we can talk about that later, what's next, and, um, the level donation was made.
Okay, Bruce, what do you got for us?
Couple of questions, yes, the, the fire relief fund, twenty-two thousand nine hundred and seventy, we get, we get money for that, don't we?
Yeah, so it's actually deposited, and then we just write it
It's passed through.
Right, to the, yeah.
A couple of questions on the budget to actual report, first of all, um, we have a
Can you let me know a page when you find it?
Yeah, it's, uh, under expenditures, engineering four oh eight point three one.
What page are you?
Page, um, four. Fifteen thousand, one hundred and twenty-seven dollars and fifty-seven cents per color.
Yes.
I, I'd like to get a breakdown, itemized breakdown of those costs for the next meeting, could you do that for me?
Sure.
Some of those were, I'm hoping were rollovers from the paper.
Yeah, I think eleven, at least, I think eleven thousand for sure, and another eight hundred, I believe, were from the multimodals.
Okay.
Um, but I can
Yeah, if you could just put a line item, this is how much, and this is what it was for. That would be, that would be great. The other thing I would just want to point out to everybody, we are at, under total expenditures, we are at ninety, almost ninety-three percent of our expenditures for the year, and we're certainly not ninety-three percent of the way through the year. So, what that tells me is we're gonna go over what we budgeted for in terms of the amount for twenty twenty-five, I just want to bring that to everybody's attention.
I think the big add-on to that was we did not do a zero sum budget, we did not budget every cent that we took in, we had like sixty-five thousand dollars, I think something like that, we did a budget.
So, uh, I just wanted to, that's all I have.
Okay, any other questions for Jess on that?
I did want to add one more thing, uh, we did get the Camtran bill for next year, so when we do work on the budget, we'll have to add that exact amount on our budget, um, because they ask for that.
They, they want any comp, they want budget.
Right, yeah, and they want, they need that line item to be on there exactly.
Does that number go up?
Uh, I honestly don't remember what it was last year, but I do have the new bill.
No, we don't have any competition for those, so we have a choice.
Twenty-one, ninety-three, ninety-two.
Okay, anything else for Jess on the Treasury's report? If not, I'll entertain a motion to accept Treasury's report and pay the bill.
I'll make that.
Christie's motion, second? Second by Brian, roll call, please, Jess.
Sure.
Rick Ramish?
Yes.
John Baylog?
Yes.
Brian Cora?
Yes.
Bruce Shannon?
Yes.
Chrissy Dicker?
Yes.
Michael Guyer, absent. Jessica Young?
Yes.
Okay, next thing on the agenda is the quality of life ordinance, uh, that's twenty-five.
Uh, it's twenty-four, yeah, two thousand, twenty-five, zero, four.
Zero, four.
And in your packets that I handed out, um, you can see the first one is a red line version reflecting the challenges we talked about at the last meeting, and then the second one is and then the second one is just a clean version of that same thing.
Anybody have any questions on the changes? The name change was, uh-
Section five.
The manner of service.
Through, through mail, as opposed to putting, knocking on the door, hanging something on the doorknob.
That's right.
All the bylaws should be done through the mail.
Well, which one, twenty-five, twenty twenty-five oh four?
Yeah, the one with the smaller print is a red line.
If you, the one in your left hand, Bruce, you saw that.
Is this one here?
Yeah, if you turn, open up the back one page, you can see the red line. I'll just take it out. Okay.
Do you want to, uh, address what we talked about on the phone, or is it a good session?
Well, this, if we have to vote it up or down, right?
No, he's, uh, that, that's a legal question, I think we should address that in the executive session. Maybe it only comes into play if you adopt this anyway, so.
Right.
Okay, okay, so, and we take a motion to adopt the quality of life ordinance, ordinance twenty twenty-five dash oh four. Motion to that effect?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion on the floor, I got you a second. Second by John, uh, yes, I think we better do a roll call.
Yeah. Rick Ramish?
Yes.
John Baylock?
Yes.
Brian, or, yeah, Brian Pora?
Yes.
Bruce Shannon?
Yes.
Christie Dicker, no. Jess Young?
No.
Michael Guyer absent.
The motion carries forty-two. The ordinance is going to adopt it. Okay, next, quality of life, uh, motion to, uh, appoint officers for quality of life. Resolution twenty, twenty-five oh three, it's a resolution, not a, who will, uh, take care of issuing tickets.
Are, are we, uh, this ordinance doesn't address person by name, just addresses a, an officer, an officer, okay.
I guess, I should probably, you know.
Is that, was that right? Yeah, I mean, in this resolution, you can appoint somebody by name or by position, so if you wanted to be your road crew, or your secretary treasurer, or if you wanted to actually name somebody, you could do it either way. I'm fine with either of those. So, but do we have to do that right now? You have to do that right now, yeah, and that's what this resolution is. So, we appoint a name, or a position? I'm, I'm, I'm fine with either, yeah. Okay.
Okay, so we need to decide, uh, Toby's, uh, solicitor's advised that it should not be a member of council.
That's right.
No, if you're looking for a motion, I'll make a motion that, uh, our, our secretary be appointed to this position.
Okay, a motion on the floor, a second. Did she, did she say no? If she, we do accept the position, if, if the vote is on the floor, would you?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, I got a motion on the floor to accept, uh, do you want, Bruce, you want to make it to secretary, so it would be an ongoing position?
Yeah, I mean, Jessie may quit tomorrow, I mean, um, you know, so.
Are you sure you'd want to just make that a blanket, secretary?
Well, like I say, she, she could give notice tomorrow, so then, then we gotta, what are we gonna do, pass another resolution?
Well, wouldn't you want to kind of find out who that secretary is before you entrust this huge responsibility?
I, yeah, I mean, I think we save a lot of headaches if we just go ahead and appoint this person by name,
future, future, possible.
Or, or the, or the title, uh, the position, and, and the name.
Wow, I strongly disagree with Bruce.
I think, part, part of the situation you're in is that you don't have a whole lot of options, Christie, you know?
Right, but I think it's scary to just blanket and say the secretary when-
Well, give her, give her another type, give her another office.
No, I, she's trying to say that if Jessie would quit, and we have someone else in there that is not trustworthy like Jessie is, we'd be stuck.
Then we'd have to, we'd have to appoint someone else.
But it's, we're making a motion to-
Why would we hire a secretary that isn't trustworthy?
But you don't know, we've been there before, where things, when it arrives.
What, what would be your suggestion?
I'm not in favor of it, just for the record, at all, but I, I think, I think naming a secretary opens us up to possibly something down the road that could be bad.
Well, I think the motion was-
I mean, you make whatever motion you want.
The motion was by title and by name, is that right?
Or, either or.
No, therefore.
Yeah, okay. If you want to make it Jessie.
If you want to just make it Jessie?
Yeah, just keep it Jessie. Then why don't we just make it, then, let me change the motion to, to say that, uh, we make a motion that our current secretary, Jessie Pora, be appointed as the quality of life ordinance officer.
Now, you have a good second for that motion.
All right. Thank you for that, that's good.
We'll, we'll call though again, Jess, I guess.
Rick Ramish?
Yes.
John Baylock?
Yes.
Brian Pora?
Yes.
Bruce Shannon?
Yes.
Christie Dicker?
No.
Michael Guyer absent, Jess Young?
No.
Now, if she quits as secretary, she can be, she can stay the quality of life officer forever. She didn't think of that.
Yeah. She's not secretary anymore.
Yeah, that's what, that's what it literally means, yeah.
Okay, next thing, next thing on the agenda is, um, a motion to approve resol- resolution twenty twenty-five oh four. That was me to approve the joining of Upper Yoder, of allowing Upper Yoder Township to join West Hills Regional Police.
Toby, can you explain that's why, where you have to vote on this, like, why does this involve us?
So, the West Hills Police Commission is, uh, a formation of municipalities by agreement, and you can't let another municipality into the West Hills Police Commission unless there's a unanimous vote of the municipalities who are already in it.
Okay, so since we're all, you have to agree that way.
Yeah, Upper Yoder can't join unless we agree on the other municipalities' agreement.
Little, little update for everybody, it seems all the, Chief could back me up on this, it seems all the hurdles have been, uh, crossed. We ended up meeting Tuesday night with them, and they agreed to just about everything moving forward, so it just would, we're shooting for a November first, uh, with us, with West Hills starting to patrol Upper Yoder also.
Are there going to be additional fees for us, or do you-
No, we are, are, look, we actually, we'll go down.
Okay.
Okay, we would, we, that was part of the stipulation, we, I'm not all of the municipalities, if we would not pay more money to bring someone else on. So, our, our, our quarterly payments will go down.
Okay.
The number's not exact, but it's looking like, uh, possibly, it depends, we want to look at it as, as a twenty twenty-five numbers or twenty twenty-six numbers, there's a tentative twenty twenty-six budget, and it's getting another increase, which, because of the lease contract. If you looked at twenty twenty-six numbers, we go down by about four thousand dollars a year.
Okay, and then are there going to be more officers?
Yes.
Okay, how many more?
Four, four full-time?
Four full-time.
Okay.
Four full-time, and as many part-time as we can get, we're looking for about six more.
Okay, because Lower Yoder's pretty big, and we, oh, yeah, either way. We already have limited visibility in the borough, so just want to make sure.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five oh four?
I'll read it.
Okay, second? Brian?
No.
No, John, anybody, anybody for a second on this resolution?
I'll second it.
Bruce, okay, let's do a roll call again, yes?
Rick Ramish?
Yes.
John Baylock?
Yes.
Brian Pora?
No.
Bruce Shannon?
Yes.
Christie Dicker?
Yes.
Michael Guyer absent, Jess Young?
Yes.
Resolution passes five to one. Okay, so, uh, Jess, you want, the next thing we have, we got a letter from Hurrydale Borough about, uh, a recreation thing that they put on, which, well, we've done this in the past, I think, that's right?
I, I think maybe one time since I've been here.
Yeah, they said, they claimed they, and actually their president and council called me, and I think if we were going to talk about it, yeah, we're gonna talk about it. He says, in the past, that we have given, but they do not send a letter out every year. They gave you a-
Yeah, um, so Jess asked, um, to reach out for more details, so, uh, we asked if any other municipalities, um, have, have contributed, and they said no, um, she's, I asked how much of the two thousand they were looking for, she said she was hoping that they would contribute equally four hundred dollars each. Um, and I asked if, she asked the school district if they would, um, at all participate, and they did not answer her.
Yeah, I, 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 from what I understand, it's an insurance thing, it's paying insurance for the kids playing here to recreation that, that the borough runs, and I guess our kids are there at times, so, uh, in the other discussion, if not, can, can I take a motion with a number?
I'd make a motion that we contribute five hundred dollars to Hurrydale School District.
It would be to the borough, though, right?
For the borough. For, for the purpose of-
Yes.
Recreation, right.
And you said four hundred?
Five hundred.
Five hundred.
More than they're asking for, Bruce.
Well, obviously, other municipalities aren't stepping up for the plate, so, I mean-
And they don't ask every year.
No, and we try to contribute to them every year, yeah.
And we have in the past.
I think it's a good-
Their, their, their council president told me that we were the only one that has, and it's sort of sad that that's the way it is.
And five hundred's a nice even number, so.
Okay.
Okay, I have, okay, motion second by John, uh, spending some money, Jess, let's roll call.
Rick Ramish?
Yes.
John Baylock?
Yes.
Brian Pora?
Yes.
Bruce Shannon?
Yes.
Christie Dicker, yes. Michael Guyer absent, Jess Young?
Yes.
Okay. Six, nothing on that, but, okay, motion to purchase digital speed limit sign, we're gonna make a mo-, we're gonna pass this motion, and then we'll get together with you guys, decide how many.
Okay.
Uh, you guys have a certain amount of money that you want to spend, we have a certain money amount that we want to spend. You guys want to talk about how many you want to look at, we're looking at things that cost eight hundred and fifty, let's say, let's just round it to nine hundred dollars, okay? Okay, so if you guys, what were you guys thinking, two, one?
Two, we did the math here, so, two speed limits we could do, and four of the slows. And we, we have enough to do that. But I mean, that's up to you if you want the slow signs.
You want to put the slows, the, the slows light up also, huh?
Yes, yellow.
It's a different model, I think.
No, it's, that one, that one actually went down, that one was-
It's prime days, too, so, yeah.
Oh, so that, so they're probably gonna go, they're gonna go right back up.
Yeah.
Yes, that's what I was gonna go with.
Uh, question, these signs that you're looking at don't print out data-
No.
No. For traffic enforcement, how, how, uh, critical is that for police service operations in terms of, I mean, are you, is anybody else buying these signs for, with the printouts, and are you using them?
Yeah, um, Westmont has, theirs, it's kept inside the sign, we can basically pull up next to it with a, with a laptop, or even my cellphone, they download the data, it stores on there. It stores all the data, it counts how many cars go through, what time, so it's almost like a traffic study, you get what, your hot, your high peak times, and it also keeps track of the speed, so you know whether it actually is an issue, or how fast cars are going, and it helps give you a ballpark down to fifteen minutes of where your high traffic area is, and what time. So, it could help with reporting if it, if it has that capability.
Okay, so my question to you is how often are you using that data?
Well, I download-
Because that could impact what kind we get.
Yeah, well, I download-
It's, it's, it's a huge difference in price.
I know that, I know that, but I'm just, I mean, if it meant, if, if you're using the data, and it meant we could maintain safer traffic operations in the borough, then that might convince people to go with a higher product.
Right, well, it varies, like, if, like, Westmont moves theirs around, different streets each time, and theirs only, theirs battery powered only lasts, like, thirty days. So, when they take it down, take it back to their, the, the grove, the target, I go down the grove and download all the data. So, every thirty days, I'm downloading the data, and then I get it back to their council, and show them, here's your, here's your traffic study, basically. How many cars go through, look, right now, it's Bucknell Avenue.
Okay.
So, but they almost got a cop, how, how many cars going down Bucknell Avenue a day, or a thirty-day period, and how fast cars are going, then average, it spits out an average speed and a, like, a, a top speed, because you, you, it actually indicates, a car might have been going forty-five, but the average speed was only twenty-eight, that indicates they slowed down, yeah.
I, I think I know what it does, my question to you is how useful is it to the police department?
Well, it helps us target certain times.
And are you using it for that very purpose?
Where, where, where would you put, we, we've already have that situation, you guys got no place to sit.
Right.
We told you someone's speeding here, it wouldn't make a difference as to where you're, you're, you're trying to do that now, but we can't, we've got no place to go.
Right. Well, here, it's pretty much the main drag, you got Gilbert Street and Crystal Street where you're-
What we're talking about, um, is, maybe we have four of them, or, or the main drag would be, we would put two on Hobbit Street, and then put two on Gilbert Street. And so we would, I see it more as, like, what the city has on Franklin Street, upper end of Franklin Street. Basically, it's a, you see it, and if, if we get the ones like Nikki, you know, we were looking at, stark green and turn red, it would let people know.
Right, it, it, there's shot, if the data does show it, it is effective slowing down traffic, now, fort- fortunately, we can't enforce on that sign. I mean, so, we can't take that data at all.
Well, we're, we're kind of-
Yeah, we can't enforce on that, but-
We're, we're kind of getting off track as far as the motion goes, in terms of what time we decide. So, the motion is, I'll, I'll make the motion that we purchase a digital speed sign-
Okay.
To be determined at a later date.
But don't we want to give them today because of prime?
Is, how, how long is, is there two-day prime or one-day prime, is it over today?
It's today. It's today.
For me, I'd be, at this point, like you said, Rick, I agree, I'd be committal to make a motion to purchase two of the speed limit signs, and four of the slow ones, in accordance with what you feel is relevant.
They, they, they want to do two and four, we would just do two of the speed limits, so that would give us four speed limits and four slows. And we would, this place would be lit up like a Christmas tree at night.
Can we do one with the data, and let them be able to meet that?
Did that have things, I think, they were pushing eight?
Like thirty-five hundred bucks.
Well, and plus, they gotta, they have to come in and do a study ahead of time or something like that.
Okay, all right.
Oh, okay, so we'll just, we'll do the motion, we can figure out how many in that, maybe after the meeting or something like that, okay?
Well, I'll, I'll make the motion that we purchase speed limit signs.
And we're, we're, we're tied this together for you guys, is we have forty-one hundred dollars in Caddie, uh, we have twenty-nine hundred dollars for the thaw bucket that's coming in to seal their cracks, and, or, around the paving area, around the park and that, uh, so we actually need another twelve hundred dollar invoice in order to just make our Caddie, so, these, basically, when we pick up the Caddie, usually costs us four hundred dollars. Okay? Motion on the floor by the-
Do I need to say how many that we're gonna buy, or am I not sure? If we know, I mean, I think we talked about two.
Okay, well, I mean-
Are they buying from?
All right, so how many, you want two?
Nikki, you guys are, you, you think you can do it today, do four and two, or, you think you guys can get that done today?
Yeah.
Four, four speed limit and two slow signs?
No, the reverse of that.
Four slow signs and two speed signs?
Yeah, and we would do two, two speed limit.
Okay, well, I'll tailor my motion to that.
Okay.
Four slow signs, that we, that we purchase four slow signs.
No, 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 these, these guys are-
No, I'm gonna purchase.
These guys are purchasing, well, all we need to purchase, purchase is the two speed limit.
Okay, I'll make the motion that we purchase the two speed, speeds, uh, so are they gonna put the order in for all four of each? How, if it ends tonight?
Jess, how, how, you, you, with a credit card, you can just get on Amazon and make that purchase?
You have a credit card, yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have it, but-
No, I, I'm just saying, we can do, but you have a limit of twenty-five hundred dollars, as long as we're underneath that.
Which you may, there, there should be sixteen, it looks like sixteen, seventeen hundred dollars, so what you might have to do is make a payment on the credit card, I don't know if there's anything on it right now or not.
Can you send me the link of what they are?
Sure.
All right, we have a motion, so.
A motion, no, a second, uh, spending money, so let's, uh-
Who made the motion, who's making it?
I made my own motion, John, second.
Thank you.
Roll call though, please.
Uh, Rick Ramish?
Yes.
John Baylock?
Yes.
Brian Pora?
Yes.
Bruce Shannon?
Yes.
Christie Dicker?
Yes.
Michael Guyer absent, Jess Young?
Yes.
Okay, the agenda, next thing on the agenda is, uh, trick or treat, like, Chief, you, I know we were the first meeting, but I'm suspecting it will probably be October thirty-first, which is a Friday night, right?
Right.
Definitely, is that what you were thinking also? Okay.
Yeah, if anyone else is good with that.
Any discussion, or, or any alternative dates?
I have extra offer scheduled on that night, just because of trick or treat.
Okay, uh, we do a motion to set trick or treat for October, Friday night, October thirty-first. Okay, uh, we do a motion to set trick or treat for October, Friday night, October thirty-first.
I'll make that.
Okay, Christie, second in the bar.
I'll second.
Jessica, okay, all in favor?
I.
opposed, motion carried. Okay, everything, everything else that we have. Yeah, let's, 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 let's jump down to new business and old business, in that way, whenever we go to executive session, we'll be towards the end. New business, uh, so if, if we have a copy of the new ordinance that would be, being considered about the solicitation ordinance.
Yeah, again, I just threw this together, um, kind of the first go at it, so after you guys have an opportunity to look at it, maybe next meeting we can talk about it. A little more fully, unless, unless you guys are prepared tonight, but.
Have you guys prepared, you wanna push it back, I don't, I don't think it's a pressing matter.
What's going on the agenda?
No, oh, this is on the agenda, but personally, we do, we, we have to be advertised, I, I like a chance, I'll be honest, I did not read it yet, I'd like to read it if we want.
Yeah, okay, let's do that.
Okay, push it back, all we, we covered the fire service fee, uh, you got to be sure to let us know what's going on there already, right?
Uh, yeah, I let you guys know how many, um, late letters I sent out, I guess I just need to know how many more you want me to send out, um, because that would have been.
Four?
Four, yeah, so how, how many do you want us to go, um, the ten dollars will keep accruing, but how.
I think we went through October last year, and then in November, I sent a, a demand letter, and it was after that that we took the next steps.
I would say we'd keep the same process.
Same process.
So, I'm sorry.
Uh, I was gonna say, get through this month and, and see what happens, and then at the next meeting, we'll talk about.
Okay, thank you.
So, so the twenty-twenty-six fire service fee, which we have, which is under a new business.
Correct.
We, we, we know that there's a three percent increase in the fire department, it's going up to ten thousand three hundred and change, I believe. Uh, for twenty-twenty-six, which is an increase over what we're paying now, so are we gonna set the fire service fee right now?
That would have to be set in November for your, when we set your budget, right?
Well, that's why I have it on, we're gonna have to think about what we wanna do, because it's gonna have to be budgeted.
We wanna budget it, we wanna include it in the tax ordinance in December, and we'll have to, uh, do a resolution changing the amount.
Looking at the amount we collected, I think we're pretty much okay, I, I would think, but that's up to you guys, as to where it would be raised, I don't, I don't, I don't see that.
So are we setting the fee right now?
No, no, we're just having a discussion.
Okay.
If it went up, it would probably only go up a dollar or two, if it went up.
Yeah, yeah, not much, but I think if, yeah, but we can talk about it next month.
I just wanted to.
The main, the, the, the main things that'll keep that in fact is if people keep purchasing the tickets, 'cause that's what keeps our, our, our number down.
Honestly, when I found that out, we started buying them.
Percentage wise, we are, we are the best producing as far as the tickets they send out, so that helps keeps our service fee down. Okay, can move on to the next thing, and, uh, garbage, we're in pretty good shape for this year.
Well, no, that's.
That's next year also.
We need to know what, like, we're gonna have to think about.
They, they have a build-in, right, on their thing for an increase.
Right, but we have to add our postage and all that, like we do every year, so.
Well, get, get us, get us a report, we're gonna have to put a, a, a budget meeting together also, for ourselves.
Yeah, the budget, uh, preparation is to, next.
Yeah, yeah, we'll have to do that and talk about that. Okay, okay, so, uh, Jessica, this, uh, what is our, what is our increase, I, I know it's.
I don't, I don't know anything.
There's no contract, everyone does an increase, okay. Okay, we'll look at that, uh, gasoline, uh, this is because of everybody going to the city, this one, this is on here.
Are you, are you going to the city to buy gas?
Yeah.
And so is Westmont Borough, correct? I don't know how much gas we go through every year, what did you say, you only save on taxes, is that right, Rick?
Yeah, it's, it's all the way taxes taken off.
Yeah, well, she takes rent tax off, but they, your discount, the more gas you get, the more you get discounted, meanwhile, the city gets a perk out, you're just paying share in cost.
If we contacted, you, you think this, you think the city's getting overrun with people using their pumps?
I, I don't, I don't know.
I mean, we, we, we could save some money, uh, it wouldn't be, it actually be shorter to go, what, what happens is, I guess, he's gotta get a card or whatever, use it to city pump, and we would do the same thing, uh. It's something we can look into anyhow, save, you know, save some money, we still have to buy diesel, they don't have diesel power there.
Well, they do have a diesel pump there, but we only do the gas, I'm not familiar, I think Westmont's not buying diesel, diesel from them, just the gas.
So did you, when you, did you approach the city directly on it, did they give you a card or?
Well, what happens is, your car pulls up, I mean, all the cars are numbered, you put the car number in, and then each person has a pin, they put that pin in, so then, that gives them access to the pump, the pump turns on, and it actually logs. Do you got gas, and what car?
I'm not sure how much gas we use.
Well, I mean, it's, and I think, I think what the city doing, the more they purchase, I'm sure their, the bigger their volume, as their price goes down probably also, I would, I would think, I, I think that's why they're, why else would they do it more, if, if they want, if they want to get a, yeah, benefit, I would think.
Probably, yeah.
Okay, I think, it's, it's something we can check into.
Yeah, and, and at the end of the day, it may be more trouble than it is worth, I mean, depending on how much gas we use.
It's, it's as close as she is, it's actually close to, to, to us, so. Okay, uh, next thing, newsletters, yes, I seen your, uh, elected lot, quite frankly.
That's much.
To background, I seen others, and everybody else who figured out a chance to look at it, went forward.
Yeah, um, we have probably months to like figure out what else, but I would just wanted to maybe, if you could brainstorm, like, what else you would like to see in it, I would like to add, um, a burning permit application in each one. So that in the beginning of the year, a burning permit application goes out, they have it to send back, and that kinda gives people more time anyways, 'cause then you get it in January, you get to use it all year, so. Um, I did add, like I said, some numbers on here, it's actually a good reference, even for me, like, if you had a dead deer and all that stuff, I, I mirrored, um, Upper Yoders. There's this, like, six pages long, but they also have their own fire department and water authority and.
There's a little more detail than I was with the, so.
Um, and then I put in the very front, like I said, the annual billing, 'cause then people know that those things are going to be coming up, or when they're due, or.
The way I see it is, it's almost like a church pole, you're clipping on your refrigerator.
Right, and you just have it for reference.
Okay, so are we gonna go with that then?
Oh, I'm just, I don't, all I'm thinking is, if you could, if there's something in here that you would also li- like us to add, please let me know, we can keep adding to it.
Uh, how much, what, what do you see, you're looking to mail these out every month?
Right, I, I think you can get five or six sheets of paper in an envelope for one stamp, um, and if we did that, we'd be spending, I don't know what stamps are, seventy-four cents or something else, it'd be like three hundred bucks.
We'll get your stamps right first.
We worked that out, I mean, I tried it.
Um, and, so I'm thinking like three hundred, four hundred dollars, one time a year, all this will be sent out, just, I think.
Good idea.
People are saying they don't have Facebook, and that, that's fine, then they can.
Yeah, like I said, it's, it's, to me, it looks like, like a church pole, you can put it on a.
Yeah.
Magnet.
These are just things I quickly thought of, but I would like to have more information, I guess this kind of about it.
When do you want your files filed, Jesse, like, what's your deadline to kind of?
Um, probably the end of November, because most likely, we're gonna have to get these printed by valley. Depending how many pages, maybe we can make it like a booklet, I just don't, I don't know, it would just depend.
We're hoping it'll be two, just two big pieces, four and a half, that's what I hope.
And just stuff in an envelope, send regular.
Okay, okay, good idea, Jessica.
Nice work, Jessica.
Thank you.
Okay, um, twenty-twenty-six budget prep, Bruce, I guess, well, and, and, and anybody, anybody wanna jump in and help us?
Yeah, I, I did it last year, pretty much by myself, I, I really, I don't mind being involved in it again this year, but I think it needs to be more of a collective effort. And I, I would, you know, I would suggest we set up some kind of a budget meeting, and we need to do it pretty quick, so, um. Because it's gonna be approved at the next meeting, I think.
I, I, I'll be there, so if anybody else wants to.
I'll be there.
I'd like to be, I know my schedule sucks, but I'll do my best.
I'd be there too.
Let's get together, give us, give us the time, I'm open pretty much, I, I know you guys still work, so.
It's really the most important document to put together.
An evening, an evening works better for you guys, I'm sure, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, come up, come up with an evening, 'cause the three of us are retired, so, that's, that would work for you guys.
More flexible than you, I think.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Appreciate, appreciate your help, for sure. Okay, uh, garbage twenty-twenty-five, uh.
Look at the comprehensive plan.
Yeah, okay. You guys, you guys wanna touch on that, I got, I got some nice reviews from some of the other municipalities, I talked to people, they, they like both of you guys quite practically. They called you, they called you guys keepers, is what they said.
Well, you guys remember that, in November.
We try, I know, we have both of us with working and stuff, and they do a lot of their meetings through the days, but we try to, um, afterwards, they record them, so put in time. Uh, the traveling through day, uh, Jess was able to go and meet with them, which was nice, um, go ahead.
So, we, on the twenty-eighth or the twenty-second, last month, someday, um, all of the participants got in a box with a little van and went to all the municipalities. That are working in this comprehensive plan and went to the different sites, like, we asked what you guys wanted to see, and it was, it was neat to see that all of the municipalities have the same issues we have, declining population, blight. We need to get more people in our boroughs with high income, not necessarily high incomes, but people earning money so their taxes are paid, that's the same issues across the board, even in like Westmont. So it was nice to see that, we were able to stop at all of the locations here, so everyone got to see the level, this building or new park, the stackhouse entrance, and how that kinda works in to the plan. Um, we're actually going to have, the public meeting is scheduled for October twenty-second, so anyone in the borough, you guys included, can go to Westmont Elementary. On October twenty-second, from five to seven, and you'll meet the consulting team that's working on the project, um, and just get a feel for what's going on, it's a very positive project. And then we're having our next hearing committee meeting here on November twentieth, um, council can come if they want, um, and then they also wanna have, at our next council meeting, the consulting firm wants to join us. Um, virtually, just to give a brief update to council, because they need buy-in from you guys too, once we move towards the end of this, um, just to go over where we're at and give you guys an opportunity to ask some questions if you have them. Um, they're gonna give us, um, examples of comprehensive plans and just like some bullet points of where we're at, that I'll send probably for our next meeting, but just be aware that's coming and, um, it's just a really positive thing, I think it'll be good for the borough.
One of the interesting things that I see that came out of it so far was that, uh, they did a survey of all the participating municipalities, and Brownstown has the highest homeownership. Which means that the people that own the house, live in the house, of any, of any of the municipalities, I think it's high seventies, low eighty, something like that.
That's cool, I didn't know that.
Which means we have less, we're, by the time, we have less rentals than anybody else.
And they, they, the consulting team noticed all the empty lots, and I'm like, that's good for marketing this area, because we can get people who wanna build new homes in that community like this, so, I think that'll be part of their plan eventually.
Okay, you guys have anything else?
Uh, one last thing, just so everyone knows, we already voted to fund it, right, but they didn't make us pay yet, and when he asked, he said, did you budget this, he said, well, no, we made a resolution to, we'll just budget it in twenty-twenty-six, you don't have to pay it now.
Okay, well, you guys can be on the budgeting, we can put that in there, okay, move it forward. Okay, old business, we covered quite a bit of this stuff already, I guess, big, Laurel Municipal Update is a big thing on here, Jessica.
Uh, yeah.
A personal preview, and that's just, how many delinquent garbage do we have?
For twenty-five?
Yes.
Um, one, because they cannot, we can't find them.
One, and how many delinquent fire service do we have, eighteen or something like that?
I thought it was twelve.
It, it, no, it was eighteen when I sent the letters out, um, two that owe fees on top of, like, they paid their bill, but I never cashed their check because they still owe a late fee. Um, so, twenty.
Okay, you've done a great job with that.
Thanks.
Laurel Municipal, uh, I, I know we have the hearing on that.
Oh, yeah, so I talked to Lizzie on Monday, she called, she gave me a call, I don't really know my papers, but, um, she said that he changed his plan for three forty-four Kennard. Um, he's going to take the building down, leave the foundation, make the foundation a garage, and have cars park in it from the back of the house in.
Okay, we went through his timeframe on that, did he give one?
She did not have a timeframe, um, but she said the reason he didn't have plans is because the plans changed, and that's where we're at. He's been working on it, I have seen him working on it.
It's starting to show signs of coming down, so.
Um, but that's, he's gonna change it to more of just like a garage with a, a top.
Access from the alley coming in from the wall.
He would have to, yeah, but there's no way you could pull a car, like, from the road there.
Okay, okay, anything else from Laurel?
Um, that's all.
The ID launch?
Oh, the ID launch, chief, was that that, I guess, he was, it was, he said it was continued.
Yeah.
It was, it was continued.
The chief, the, the judge gave them thirty more days.
To do what, tear it down or fix it up?
And get rid of the car, van. Or get it inspected.
I think what's going, the thing I was trying to do was push it on to the next magistrate.
Oh, Mr. Hines.
Listen, um, can I speak on a property that used to be on the list, but it's not now, the Litsky House, just based on something I saw on the courthouse website? It looked like someone had tried to put a bid on that, and it was gonna go up for au- auction, Jesse said nobody put any, usually if someone wants to bid on something, they apply, blah, 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 make sure they're not on the list. If that was somehow sold, I don't know how someone, why they would buy it without doing lean research, et cetera, but just something we should be aware of over the next month, if someone did buy it, at auction, I mean, that, that's gonna, I know she, we already went through court and all that for her, but. Potential new actions are gonna have to, or maybe someone will buy and tear it down, and all will be great.
Do, do we still have a property management claim open on the Litsky House?
They just said they couldn't find her.
Well, if somebody has bought it, my understanding is they assume the property manager.
Nobody's bought it yet.
Nobody has.
Right, right, is that what you said?
I thought you said, you know. Potentially, I, I know it takes the deeds office a while to register, but there was, it was on, it was on the Cambria County Courthouse, that list that they go on when someone puts the deposit.
Yeah, they're taking the property as is, I mean, if they're their new owner, they're gonna be responsible for property maintenance.
Right.
What was the, uh, what's the address, I can look that up.
One forty-three?
Forty-two, I think.
Forty-two, forty-two, which is a good one, do you, you're even or odd?
Sixty-two.
One sixty-two, so it's a lot.
One forty-five.
It's a lot, one forty-five.
Yeah, sorry, what street is that on, I.
Gilbert.
Gilbert, okay. Okay.
Okay, um, twenty-four, twenty-four audit, I heard seventy-five percent was the last number I heard.
Yeah, and that was a week ago, so, she has everything from me that she, she got some stuff from Frankie, so she should be stepped in.
Okay, we'll get that, that down before the end of the year, we, believe it or not, we will finally be caught on our audits, and I know you guys deserve a round of applause, we took over, we were five years behind on audits. That would explain why there was no grants in the municipality because of that, so.
I told Ricky, I go there and take it down the line.
Okay, um, roads, we'll talk about that in executive session, storm drains, uh, I got some picked out, which, which I'd like to get done before. They're on this side, before the, the gas company comes in or when they, we're not sure, last time I talked to them, they said we are not on schedule for next year, but we could be, we're still in the planning stage on this side, so. But there are some couples that are, one that didn't, did not wanna do, which we have to get someone else to support, or else it's too close. We'll address that, Mike made a suggestion about a gentleman, it might come up with some for, so we'll take a look at that, so.
And, and you talked to Brad about those, uh, millings, those trenches?
Yeah, they, 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 they have about, found out probably five weeks, five, six weeks before the plant's closed, once they, they don't wanna bring them in until everything's done, they're finishing up on Carter's, I guess they'll be down on Wall Street. They'll bring them in to do all that, and get it all buttoned up before the winter, what they'll do is they'll mill on one foot on each side of the ditches, they're already there now, and then bring a machine in and pave, pave to that area, there won't be no finished paint being done this year, which I didn't really expect.
What's the gas company doing, they're, they're coming up Virginia, and they're going down Wall, but they're only, there's gonna be a big section in the middle there that's not completed.
That's the gas companies, I don't have no idea what they're busy with.
I was wondering what they're doing there, but, uh, doesn't make much sense.
They jump around whenever they have a situation, that's why they run around during, if they have a leak up, or every other week.
Yeah.
And so that was sort of an emergency, they figure rather than do repairs anymore, they would replace the lines, so, okay, that's, that's, I'm looking right, it was about everything we have.
Just one last thing, first of all, I wanna thank you for this, uh, Brian, you and Jesse put this together, uh, we had some questions about, two months ago.
Yeah.
About where the money was going on the level.
There he is.
This is a complete accounting of the money, since you guys have taken over, I'm wondering if there's anything we can do. I'm wondering if there's anything we can do with this in terms of, should we publicize this, can we publicize it, do we wanna publicize it?
People were concerned that much they'd be here.
Yeah, I think, I think we have it, if someone wants it, they can see it.
Well, why don't we have broadband? Say that, broadband, why do we have, why do you think for broadband, the whole?
Like, the cameras.
Cameras, cameras, cameras. So we don't wanna, do we wanna put this on the Facebook page, or no, just?
Personally, I don't think so, whatever.
If anybody asks for it, there it is. Anyway, great job on that, no question where the money's going.
Okay, folks, uh, that's, we have some, uh, things to talk about in executive session.
Will you be making any, any decisions after the, after the set?
Potentially.
Potentially?
Depends how our discussions go, John.
Not a problem, I'll stick around. This is an appropriate time for me to make a suggestion to you about your newsletter, is, um, and, you know, about, is. Put, put a thing that you could start an email list for your residents? Just, you know, optional, you know what I mean, like, cause it's not very, that way would save you the postage, you know what I mean? I'm just, you know, cause it's, it's not cheap to mail stuff and print it, you know what I mean? You could just like, hey, if you don't want it mailed to you and you email it.
But then, John, they would, I'm not sure they would print it and put it on their refrigerator.
Oh, yeah, I, I get that, you, you could, okay, so she could put a line there, please print this out and put it on your fridge. I'm just, I'm just saying, you know, I'm. No, no problem, you know?
Any way to save money is a good thing.
I guess, I mean, you know, it's, it's, it's a way for, to keep your guys connected, that's what I figured is, you know, like, you know. Then you could, then you could go in somebody's fan box and, you know, I'll hang out.
I'll stick around and banter for a little bit. So, uh. Yeah, they. I'm curious to, uh. Find out about this comprehensive plan, thank goodness there's finally a public meeting about it, I will be attending that and I will be live streaming that. Um, I encourage everybody in all of these municipalities up here to attend that. I, I'll put some reminders up and do some other social, social media, um, announcements about all that, um, so, uh. So hopefully, um, you know, it's, what did she say, I'll, I'll confirm that with, with her again, October twenty-second. From five to seven at the, uh, I guess, former middle school, now elementary school. The, uh, school now known as the elementary school. So, don't go to Goutre Street, it won't, there's just a big field there, there won't be anybody there. It's over here on, on Diamond Old Ward, corner of Diamond and Luzerne. Um, five to seven, I'm here in Brownstown Borough currently, they're in executive session. Um, thanks everybody for watching and joining in and, uh. Excuse me, putting up with me for the last three years and all of my commentary at the meetings, I've been, um. Doing live streams now officially for three years, uh, well, YouTube videos, I started going live. I don't know, a few months later, when I got enough subscribers to go live. So, uh, I just prefer to do these live in real time, that way you can just see your government in action and, uh. You know, that way you can, uh, just, just see what they're doing and. Uh, you know? Apologize for y'all, I think I'm tired. This is a cool old school, actually, there's, there's an old, uh, there's old classrooms, they use it for a, uh. For a, um, borough building now, it's the old Brownstown Graves School. Federal Emergency Administration Public Work, Public Works Project Number P A ten ninety R. That's pretty, that'd be pretty interesting to, uh, hear, so. Let's do this. Brownstown Borough School nineteen thirty-six directors. Yeah. Brownstown is a little municipality that kinda hangs on the side of the hill. Tiny little place. Really small, I think, I would imagine it's probably the smallest in population and in size. Of the West Hills, uh, municipalities, you know, Southmont, Upper Yoder, Westmont. I guess you wanna call Lower Yoder too. Um, Upper Yoder, Upper and Lower Yoder are both townships. Westmont, Brownstown, and Southmont are all boroughs. That has to do with population and, and geographical size. What the parameters are, I don't know. I know boroughs have councils, townships have supervisors. I will find out what the real difference is and, uh, we'll go from there. And I'll hopefully be able to bring you the, uh, difference, wow, this has been a long meeting, we're already an hour and sixteen minutes, Jesus. Okay. Thanks everybody for watching, thanks everybody for stopping by, thank fellow support I'm getting through the, like, through the upcoming election here, thanks for all the, uh. People that have, uh, you know, asked to, uh. Answer my signs. Thanks to people that have torn them down. Probably they don't forget to get me. That's happened before, I stick around for the whole meeting. They might vote on something, and, uh, just for accountability and transparency, and so the. People of Brownstown can see the meeting, the entire meeting, and, you know, this is when you have to listen to me talk, because, uh, you know, um. Standing here with just a silent camera is kinda pointless, so I'm gonna stand here and talk about things and stuff. And, um. You know, other, other interesting, uh. Things, I don't know. What do you want me to talk about, what do you wanna cover, um, any meetings you guys want me to go to around here, um. Some, let me think of some of the, uh, the, uh, current events here, well, this weekend we have upcoming, uh. The old, uh, Westmont Hilltop Homecoming, um, it's also the, uh, all-class reunion that they have every year, um. So it's my thirtieth, uh, uh. Reun, it was my thirtieth, uh, you know, I graduated thirty years ago, so I went to my thirtieth, uh, reunion, um, had a good time for the most part. And, uh. Yeah, I'm gonna go to this, this one this year, uh, this all-class thing, I'm gonna go to the football game too, why not? I, I've been to one, one football game in the new Price Field, under the lights. Kinda weird, they don't have them on Saturday afternoons anymore, in my day, they used to have them on Saturday afternoons. But now they have them on Friday nights, okay, cool, I'll go over, I'll check it out, should be fun. We can find a park, at least you can find somewhere to park now, parking lot's big enough, um. We have the election coming up, um, Southmont's heating up, uh, there's a lot of, a lot of. A lot of people running, I guess, um. Two people running for mayor, uh, we have, uh, a couple of people running for council, um, we have myself, we have all the, uh. Seed and incumbents that were up this year are running, um, we have the, uh, prison warden, um, he's running this year. And, uh. Yeah. I wanna say this, you know, like, back in, back in January and February, I had no intention of, no intention of running, I just wasn't interested, I was pretty disillusioned with, uh. Politics, I still am, don't think I'm not, I don't, I don't really. I don't know, I don't really think that's important, what I think about that, but, um. What do you think is important is, is several people asked me, when they were coming around and asking me as a good, uh. Good resident to sign their petitions so they could run and be on the primary ballot. If I was gonna run this year, and I said resoundingly, no, but then I thought, you know what, if all these people are asking me, maybe I should. Maybe that's a good idea. And, uh. I, uh, I, I decided to run a little write-in campaign, which was just me handing out cards. Me going down on election day and handing out a bunch of cards and telling people that I was gonna run. After, you know, about a week before the election, I was like, yeah, I'll do it, sure, see, see how I get, and I got on, I got, I got, uh. I got a, I got a letter from the, uh, Cambria County Elections Office that, it's like, congratulations, you were, not accept the nomination and stuff and. I was pretty proud of myself. I think that the way some of the, for instance. Run a meeting correctly, understand what you're voting yes or no for, you know, here for instance, um. The, the resolution, or the resolution says to purchase signs, it's either yes or no, they, they, they were, they were, they were deciding to. Authorize the money being spent, the details can be ironed out after that. You know, do you, do you authorize, see, they're supposed to have everything, they're supposed to know everything that they're paying for, so they can vote yes. It's not really supposed to be subjective, it's supposed to be all figured out by the time they say yes, and then you can just vote for it, say yes. Um, this quality of life ordinance that they, um, adopted here in, in Brownstown. So their secretary lady, I don't know a thing about her, I don't know anything about any of these people. Other than the people that are, other than the gentlemen that are on the police commission from this municipality. Like I said, so far, like I said in the meeting when I spoke, so far, nobody in Brownstown in their capacity here in Brownstown has violated my rights. Yet. Um. If you do, well, you know. Can ask a couple other people what happens. Um. So, yeah, that's, um, that's that, but, uh. Way it stands right now is that lady, if she quits being the secretary or whatever, she's still the quality of law, life officer. She's appointed. There's no, did, did they put in a provision of how to get rid of them? What if she doesn't like some of the residents here? And she decides to scrutinize their property? See, that's the problem I have with that, okay? And you know how squeaky wheels get greased, so if somebody starts complaining about somebody because they just don't like them, and then they sic her on them. That can get real ugly, real fast, and it often does. I, I mean, I have, I, I have stacks of paperwork of proof from Southmont, what they've done similarly. So. With, with, with that kinda power comes great responsibility, and I hope that, um, people understand. That, you know. Consult an attorney about that. Not the solicitor, but consult an actual attorney to see if that is. You know, cause it sounds very HOA-E. And not everything in HOA, you see, and, and homeowners association is something that you agree to, it's voluntary. The government can't be, certain things they just can't restrict, like expression. You know, they can't be going on people's property without a warrant. So she better know that, she's gonna be enforcing laws now, you know? An ordinance is a law, and she will be enforcing them. And. The fastest way to open up your municipality to a lawsuit is to interpret the law. In a way that violates somebody's rights. Residents of Brownstown, I will offer you this, cause I don't really, you know, I, I have, I've, I know a few people that live over here, that's about it. If you get picked on by this quality of life ordinance, contact me, I'll do what I can to help you. Um, I'll, I'll, I'm gonna look into it and see if there's any kind of. If there's any kind of, um. Legal. Anything. Any kind of relief, any kind of, and listen, just because a law is, is, is on the books doesn't mean it's, it's not uncon, it's not unconstitutional. Doesn't mean it's constitutional, which means it hasn't been challenged. So, sometimes you have to challenge these laws and, uh, they'll change them. If they're unconstitutional, there's, there's a, there's a line in every one of them that says, you know, if anything is unconstitutional, well, that part doesn't count, or whatever. It's my hope that, 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 you know. Doesn't become the, 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 um, that lady doesn't become the, um. Property Gestapo. You know? I can be, I can become a huge problem as far as I'm concerned, you know? So now here, I guess, in Westmont, there are. You know, there's a zoning officer, I guess, and I don't know if, I don't know if, as I said, if they have a zoning board, I know Brownstown has a zoning board. Or in Southmont, there's a zoning board, I don't know about here, I imagine there is. Yeah. That can be a problem. So. They're having a. They're having a heated discussion in there, man, it's getting spicy, but as, as always, I do respect our executive sessions, I don't. That's not from my ears or your ears, I'm just saying, I can hear them speaking, I can't hear what they're speaking, but I can hear them speaking, so. Somebody's in there, somebody's in there, and they're, 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 they're getting their, um. They're getting their point across, or they're, they're at least, um, expressing their, uh, their opinion. On something in a rather, uh. Animated way. Which is good, man, hey, if you have people that are, if you have people that are, that are actively, um, vehemently. Representing you like that, good, but hopefully they're not representing themselves, hopefully they're not serving themselves, hopefully they're serving these residents. You know, that's, that, that, that's my big thing with, um. Officials, is just do what's best for the people you represent. All the people you represent, and you have to understand, some people aren't gonna agree, they don't have to agree with you. Personally, I think this quality of life ordinance they passed today is bullshit. Especially in a struggling community. We're gonna talk about a comprehensive plan that's gonna get, look, there's nothing that's gonna attract people to come in here and build homes, nothing. Taxes are ridiculous, okay, the water fees are ridiculous, okay? Let's take Southmont for example, all right, so if somebody's gonna build a house in Southmont, and they wanna, and they wanna tap into the sewer, tapping into six hundred dollars of sewer maintenance. For a job they're gonna do themselves. They're gonna have to help repay all of the, you know, doesn't that sound a little bit strange to you? Sounds strange to me, doesn't sound right either. I don't know what they charge here, and I, look, I know it's, it, I missed my opportunity to ask this month. I, like I said, I just come to this meeting basically for, um, the public, I'm gonna. I, like I said, I just come to this meeting basically for um, the public. I'm gonna start going to Westmont Borough Council meetings also. I think they are um, I haven't been in my calendar. I attended one virtually a real long time ago, and it was dumb. So I'm not gonna do that again. I'm not gonna attend one virtually. I'll just go to them. I'll livestream, because I'm really curious about, I think the writing's on the wall. I think this whole hill is gonna eventually become one big, one big happy uh, municipality, I guess, family. Dysfunctional. You know? Um, which is good, but there are things that need ironed out. I, I guess, I don't know, I don't know if that's good or if that's bad. I really don't, you know? I have my thoughts on it. I have my ideas on it. I think in some ways it would be good, and I think in some ways it would be bad. And I think we have to sit down and have a roundtable that involves the fucking public. Okay? As far as I know, this is the first public meeting of this comprehensive plan thing or whatever. I'm gonna be there. You wanna bet I'm the only person there from the public? But no worries. You can attend that meeting also here, if you want to, um. I guess maybe on Facebook, um, I'll put a uh, I'll put a thing on my uh, the Clanch um, Facebook page, which I use for the, it's, the, for this channel. It's not my personal one. I put on my personal one too. About um, questions you want, you want answered about this comprehensive plan. May, maybe, maybe me attending will, will get, will get it out. I don't know. Um. You know, I, I'm in the dark about it, and I go to every one of these meetings with the exception of Westmont. You know, I go to the Police Commissions meeting, I go to the JRA meeting to see about our sewer system. Go into Water Authority meetings, um, Johnson City Council meetings where people like me who don't live in the city can't speak. Which I find that to be a problem. I should be able to go there and speak. I remember the public. You know, what if, what if, what if I have an issue with a pub, a, a city employee? You know, and I need to, and I need to speak to somebody about that. Shouldn't I be able to go to that city council and speak to them? I should. I guess I could speak to their city manager, but I should still be able to go to their meetings. I mean, I can go to their meetings, but I can't speak. Everybody should have the opportunity to speak at it. If it takes a borough council or a city council or a township supervisor, if it takes them four hours to go to their meetings because people want us to come and speak, then it takes four hours. This, this limiting of, you know, people, people's right to speak. Would the words hurt? I mean, I shouldn't say that. Words do hurt. But in this, in, in this, in this forum, in this thing, to listen to the people, sometimes, sometimes your, your forced silence on them um, makes things a hell of a lot worse for you and for them. Look at me. I mean, I've been silent so many times, and I've been just, just told to shut up and take it so many times that now, like, you know, this is what I do. I go to these meetings and I, I um, livestream them. So in that way, look, i- it's just on the record. You know what I mean? It's, it's in front of the camera, and it's on the record, and that's it. Can't walk away from what you said in front of my camera. You know, that's why I do it. That's, that's why, that's why it's a service I do for the public of this area. Um. There is some entertainment value in it, because you never know what I'm gonna say. Um. Maybe I might start doing a thing on livestreams at other meetings, you know, like for um, if I get a certain number of likes or a certain number of things, I'll tell whatever public official to go fuck themselves. Right? Because I get accused of doing this for views, and for, for my YouTube channel. Yeah, I do. You know, I mean, like, I just think that's kinda fun, alright? I'm doing that for fun, really. I'm not really doing that for any kinda real, you know, real money or anything. It's, it's really basically all for fun. And for awareness, and because nobody else does it. And I'm, I, I, I would be glad, if I didn't do it, I would, I certainly would be glad that somebody else was doing it. So, that's what I'm here for. And the people that are watching right now, you know why I'm doing it. You know that's why I do it. You know I'm doing it for you to watch these meetings. And Jesus fucking Christ, vote on whatever the fuck you're gonna, talk about, you're gonna fucking talk about. Tell me, come, come, come back in, and you're not gonna vote on anything. So I can go fucking home. I'm hungry. I haven't eaten dinner yet. It's already uh, twenty-five after eight. What's everybody having for dinner tonight? Comment down below what you either had for dinner or what you're gonna have. Um. I don't know. Or not. Don't comment anything. But if you like what you see, leave a comment. And if you don't like what you see, leave a comment. I really hope they don't forget about me. I hate standing at these meetings. I'm gonna stand over here so they can see me. That makes one, no, they can't see me. This fucking fire hydrant's in there. It, it's taking up like, premium lean spots. Let's do that. Okay. So uh, they're, they're deciding all of Brownstown's problems and all of their, everything that's going wrong in this township, they're uh, figuring it out right now. Or at least for this month, they're figuring it out. They're going over stuff and things, they're going over. Going over stuff that I really shouldn't mention. And I won't. I'll respect that. But I think they should have been doing the things they're doing right now out in the open part of the meeting, but. Well, they can, I can go in and discuss things, that's right, and I guess come back and. Jesus. They're fumbling around with bids. Fucking, I'll tell you, they're fumbling around with bids. And really, you know, they shouldn't be doing that now. Like, you know, they, they, they should just pick it out in the open, unless they're discussing the things on it. But. Have to vote on it then, like, you know? Me in the room, somebody there. You can't do that. Like, people that are still watching, I appreciate it. Thanks for hanging out. It's been a long lash, an hour and thirty-eight minutes. I don't think they're gonna fucking do anything. No, they're not, you know, it's not as long as some of the Upper Yoder Township meetings, the owner executive session. Try and get me to leave, so they can do what they're gonna do outside of the executive session. You know? Everybody leaves after, after the adjournment meetings. Really, you should maybe stick around, because they might, they might vote on something. Like Toby said, you never know. They might vote on something. He's right. He's absolutely right. That's a lot of times how they can sneak in those funny, those funny-ass votes, like Upper Yoder did back in the summer. How they fired two cops. Wonder how many of the Upper Yoder Township police officers they're bringing on to West Hills? That's, that, that's a concern of mine. That's a real concern. To me, that's actually fucking scary. That prob, that, that, that jurisdictional line kept some really bad cops away from my home. Not enough to deal with those fuckers. That's bad. Well, they'll be the one, the ones that'll kill me or tase me or shoot me or something. So, just be aware of that. Running out of things to talk about for once. I don't know. I'm not. Um. So uh, you know, if you, if you go to, if you go to Pacer on, on uh, interwebs there, where you can look at federal lawsuits, there are uh, currently a few that I'm, I'm involved with. Play of. Play of. If anybody remembers, if you go back to my channel, go back a couple of years, I had to endorse some pretty serious police harassment by some departments. And uh, well, it's accountability season. That's, that's what I've been doing lately, is I've been holding them as accountable as I can. Um, doing it. Whatever it's worth, I'm doing it, you know? Um. They don't seem to, I think it's a big joke or something. You know who doesn't think it's a jo- a joke? Their insurance company doesn't think it's a joke, and I don't think it's a fucking joke. Never did. None, none of it's funny ha-ha to me. None, none of it is like, I don't know. You know? I don't know. None of, none of this is, nobody's been a clown, and nobody's amusing me. So. I don't know. There's a school bell right there. I wish that shit was loud back in the day. Hurry up and fuck it, but. I wanna see if they're gonna be aw- award the uh, award the contract to. I'm curious. I'd like to know. Looks like they're maybe wanting to have the executive session here pretty soon. I hope so. It looks like somebody's coming to get me. That's good. I was running out of banner to talk about to my audience. That's good. You guys are gonna tell me you couldn't come up with anything.
Officially back into session, um, the only thing I need, I guess, is if we're, if we're moving forward with a motion to approve a resolution twenty, twenty-five oh five approving the commencement of legal proceedings.
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
Motion and a second full call vote, Jesse.
Kirk Gravish?
Yes.
John Baylaw?
Yes.
Brian Corrath?
Yes.
Chris Shannon?
Yes.
Chrissy Dicker?
Yes.
Michael Guyer-Abson?
Jess Young?
Yes.
Okay. Another, another motion on the B twenty-nine part is we are still in the process of reviewing bids. We will make a decision on that in a special
Table until next week.
Special meeting next Wednesday.
Right.
Yeah, that's right. We'll have it on the agenda for the
Okay. If anybody got anything else, I thought I had a motion to adjourn. Jess, you gonna get together with Nikki?
I already ordered them. So our, our obligation to those signs are done.
Can you just reconfirm with me whether the comprehen- the meeting for the comprehensive thing is and just, because I, I wanna attend. I mean, I, I hate to put you on the spot, but I mean, we're here, you know what I mean?
I think it was ten twenty-two from five to seven. Yeah, you're right.
Ten twenty-two from five to seven.
At Westmont Elementary, and anyone in Brownstown, Westmont, Upper, Lower, Yo- Lower Yoder and South, anyone can attend, but that, those are the municipalities that it's proclaimed to.
And we could, um, is that the first public meeting of this? I believe it is, isn't it?
Public meeting for this.
Okay. Okay, good. Um, I, you'll, you'll be seeing me. Um, do you, who is uh, who is the contact person for that? Do you, like, who is seeing that up, like, you know?
The Stewart Group is the consulting firm that
If I wanted to write to no request any documentation, that's, that's, that's
Shannon Murphy.
Okay, thank you.
Shannon, and who are they with? They're with?
She's with Cambria County, uh, Planning Commission.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
You guys, you guys answer questions, so like, I don't get that other places. Dude, I'm just, I, like, I don't ask these questions for my own benefit, you know what I mean? I'm asking because people ask me like, these things, and I don't know the answer to them, and I'd like to actually know, so you know? That's, that, that, that's a very um, that whole, that whole comprehensive thing, okay? To be honest with you, I don't know what you guys are trying to do, but I wanna know. And I think a lot of people do, and I think there's a lot of people that don't understand what's happening with it. So, I'll talk to you guys at that meeting if that, if that's, you know what I mean? If you guys are willing to, so.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thanks. Yeah.
My schedule's stuck. I tried.
Well, hey, man, you know, I mean, at least, at least, you know, I like to see open meetings, even, even on like committees and stuff, you know, because that's, that's where the stuff really gets done, you know what I mean? Where decisions get made, it's in committee meetings and stuff, you know, and then you guys just come here and, and say yes or no, and you know? So, thank you for your time. Thanks for seeing me. Thank you. Yep, appreciate it. Well, there you go. Okay, good. There's a light out here. Good. Um, finally fall here in Pennsylvania. Okay, um, Brownstown comprehensive meeting on October twenty-second, uh, school. I'll be there. In fact, I'll probably head to the livestream now. And um, public participation is important. Coming to these meetings, so you know what your government's doing with your tax dollars, the decisions they're making that affect you and your home, your rights, what you can and can't do with property that you own. These are all important, and they're all, they're all things that if people don't attend, they can do whatever they want, and, and know, you know? Remember, everyone, Marvin Heemeyer out in Granby, Colorado, didn't build a kill-dozer because he felt like it. That wasn't a hobby of his. He did it to send the people that made these horrible decisions a message, which is not make horrible decisions. Do the right thing. Make the best decisions for the people you represent. I'm gonna finish this up now. Thank everybody. Wanna thank everybody for watching and joining. Wanna thank the Brownstown Borough Council for, for putting up with me and allowing me to ask a few questions out of order. Um, like I said, I, 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 I have, I have, you know, this has always been a nice little quiet community, I've always thought, you know, and I have no no, no um, issues with them. Hopefully I never do. Um, you know, i- it's my hope actually to um, you know, make this, make, make this the best community to live in, around, you know, th- th- this whole hill up here. You know, the shining example of, of, of how to, how to act, you know? So, okay, I don't know. I'm gonna go. Thank you all for watching. Thank you all for stopping by. I don't know when the next live show is gonna be. It'll be in the next couple of days, if not definitely next Monday for um, the Southmont Borough Council meeting. There might be a few more coming up this week. Um, not sure. Uh, I've been doing a singer. I've been scheduling them during the day, and yeah, so I'm done talking. I talked enough. Thanks for watching. If you like what you see, leave a comment. If you don't like what you see, leave a comment. And, okay. Subscribe to my channel. That's how you get the good shit. Alright? And please, consider voting for me if you live in Southmont. I'm a Democrat. I'm a progressive liberal Democrat. And I'm hoping to get the Southmont Borough Council out of my pocketbook a little bit, and out of yours too. And I'm hopefully gonna
hopefully I can do some more changes, some more reform for the good, for the better of this community, I have my ideas, and I think I can really think I can really I'm effective at communicating, whether, whether people like the way I communicate or not, I'm effective at it, so, if I can get my point across, everybody's leaving now. And so I'm gonna finish up with this stream, thanks for watching, bye-bye.